July 13th. Uh, I'm sorry, not July 13th.
(laughing).
I went right along with it. Back in time. Call the August 10th regular board meeting to order at 6:35 PM. We'll stand for the invocation followed by the pledge of allegiance. Dear my Father, we thank you for this day. God, we thank you for your grace. God, we pray, Lord, over this school district, over our leaders, Lord, I pray from the leaders of this country, of this state, and of this county, Lord, I pray, God, that you give us guidance and leadership, Lord, in everything that we do and every decision that we make, God. We ask these favors in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item is, uh, I'm gonna make a motion that we amend the agenda that's presented and remove, uh, executive session off of the agenda.
I move that we accept the amended agenda as presented.
I made the move, but you'll just second.
Oh, sorry, second.
Seconded by Mrs. Lewis, by Mrs. Spindly. Any discussion? No discussion? All in favor? Five. Any opposed? None. Motion carries. Now, do I hear a motion to approve the amended agenda?
Make motion we approve the amended agenda.
Second. Motion by Mrs. Lewis, seconded by Mr. Long. Any discussion? All in favor? Five. Opposed? Motion carries. Next will be the superintendent reports. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Smith?
Thank you, Dr. Wilson. Martha, just a second to pull up. The first report you're gonna see is, um, the general fund report for... Which one? We have two, so I need to see which one. For August. Now, there's not a whole lot on this one. Um, here at the beginning of the year, you may recall that most of the revenue that we get for July and August goes to the prior year payroll, so you see a very small QBE amount there. And the taxes that are still coming in, you can see, are, um, you have zero on this report. Any of the property taxes, adware taxes and certain sales taxes that come in at this time are also backed into FY '17. Different ones have different dates. Some cut off June, some July, and some August. Property taxes in August. So, we have only collected 0.86% of our budgeted revenue, and we have spent 4.44% of our budgeted expenditures. And you'll notice quite a few of those are encumbrances. That means those are purchase orders. So, we have started off the year with a bang, but everybody's in good shape and doing exactly how they need to. So, if we can go to... Let me give you an update on the... Let me give you an update. This is not the closing version of the June 30, '17 general fund. This is where we are at this moment. Like I just said, um, we were, are still collecting revenues for property taxes. And in just a second, you can see it. Does everybody have a paper copy? Okay.
Oh, that's not it.
Oh, no, that's not it. Well, while she's working on that, um, so far, we have collected 94.9% of our budgeted property taxes. That is close to where we were. We're a little bit behind where we were at this time, uh, last year, but we will still collect checks for the rest of this month, and it will be in the final report. And y'all will see the final report for general fund. Um, you can see where all the other revenues stand. So, at this moment, we have collected 93.63% of our budgeted revenue for FY '17 and expended 95.04% of our budgeted expenditures. Do y'all have any questions on those two reports? Okay. Move along to our SPOS account. Month of July, we collected $377,660.26 in SPOS revenue, earned to interest of $1,460.31 in interest. We had several, um, expenditures that we cut checks for, as you can see there, at various locations. I won't go through each one of them, but if you have a question about any of them, just let me know. So, at the end of July, our balance in our SPOS account was $6,853,112.19. And we'll move along into the fourth report. And you can just see our collections thus far. So, we like to see those higher, um, I'll remind you, in our last SPOS, the last 12-month average we had was about 342. So, we're up a good little bit there, so we like to see that. Um, I do wanna check, I've heard from most of you, but did everybody get your audit report? And someone asked, and I'm not sure who it was, but, um, they used to give you the option to mail it to you or get it by email. They don't anymore. You get it by email. So, sorry about that. I wasn't aware that we changed, we changed that.
I don't remember saying, but there's a lot of things I don't...
Well, we, we passed some information along, but they, they don't do that anymore. But everybody got it. Do y'all have any questions?
I have a question.
Okay.
Um, did you ever, you, I remember you saying that you were, saw that there was a pretty big increase in the SPOS. Did you ever find out what the, uh, source might have been?
I've put in multiple calls to the Georgia Department of Revenue, and I still, I even have another issue I'm currently working on. I have not received a return call, so keep trying.
It'd be interesting to see one, you know, that's a pretty big jump in how much we collected from...
And typically, I'll tell you, in the past, um, typically, it has to do with, uh, vehicle sales, because that is one of our largest, um, earners, I guess you can say, in Pickens. So, when, when one of the local dealers runs a, some type of deal, when they would do 0%, we would always see an increase in our revenue. So, I can probably check with the local vendors, but so far, I have not heard from mistake.
As long as when they call, they'll get that back.
I know. Just don't return the calls.
Don't return their calls.
I'll see how that works, but I kinda don't think it will. Um, the other report you have, um, we present this to you, um, quarterly, and these are the internal school accounts. And then I also added athletics, 'cause that was one we added this year, just wanted, you know, it's not, that part's not required, but I added it anyway, just so you can see it. But it's, uh, just a summary of each quarter and what kind of activity they had. And if you have questions, that's all I have.
Thank you. Tenor's report, Ms. Camprell?
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent and the board members. Very happy to give this report to you, and if you would, please keep in mind that this report is changing every few minutes. It's like a revolving... And Patrick can nod yes, he agrees. Um, but I'm gonna talk to you just a little bit about ending enrollment versus enrollment, where we are now, and then Patrick is gonna come on, and he's gonna kinda talk to you about where the impact, how, what classes, what grade levels and things like that, that we're looking at impact. If you look at ending enrollment last year, this was on 5/25/2017, where we were at 4,265 students. And this is the yellow section that I'm looking at. If you look at the total as of today, uh, that was 4,453. So, the difference there is the 188 that you see. And then I went in and I took the difference of each school. So, if you look at Harmony Elementary School, you're looking at an additional 20 students. And then if you look at Hill City, you're looking at additional 60 students. Jasper Elementary, we're seeing a decrease of six. Jasper Middle School, additional 14. Pickens County Middle School, we're seeing a decrease of 11. Pickens High School, we're seeing an increase of 104 students. And then Tate, we're seeing an increase of seven. Now, keep in mind, the 188 total there does include the 74, which is the no-shows, if you see out at the very end of the column. So, if you take the 74 and you subtract from the 188, we're looking at a total of 114 new students. Because those 74 no-shows, we are still working, trying to locate them, um, see where they are, um, where they're, you know, so some school systems start later, um, so we're still, you know, having to battle with that as well. Um, but our, um, attendance data clerks that are at the county office now, uh, they have been on the phones and calling diligently and working on that, trying to help centralize registration with a lot of that, so, um, making notations. So, that is one thing that we're hoping, we're continuing to, hopefully, we can see these numbers decrease. By Monday, that's our 10th day, that's kinda when we would like to have everybody accounted for. Um, and then if we don't, then it's, it's kinda sorta, you know, they, they start looking at me and say, "Okay, Shelley, what now?", you know? We're, so we, we really have to start digging in a lot deeper. Um, but we are working to try to see if we can locate, uh, the 74. Now, if you're looking at, um, the information below the count of withdrawal students, you're looking at a total of 159, and it's broken down by grade level. Uh, and then, uh, Patrick is gonna come on, and he's gonna kinda give you a little more additional information, that, um, these numbers account for ending enrollment versus, um, our enrollment as of today. So, just keep in mind that 114, and then if we look at comparing apples to apples, um, then it's gonna be a, a little different, but I don't wanna, I wanna try to set the stage for this first, and then when Patrick comes on, he's gonna give you more information as to incoming, homeschool, number of homeschools, cyber academy, things like that outgoing. And, um, so, just, just keep that in mind. That does, our numbers are gonna be slightly decreased, uh, if you look at same-day comparison to last year to this year. Um, so it's not as many students as the 114. So, we are looking at less if you do the comparison, and, and again, I'll let Patrick kind of expound on that. Any questions?
Yeah. On this, on your withdrawn students right here, these numbers here, when was, when were these students withdrawn? From, from what year? Are these numbers here from last year, or students that we had last year that we do not have this year? Is that what it is?
Yes. Students that we, that have been withdrawn since, since June.
Since, okay.
Summer, basically, summer graduates. I mean, summer, uh, Patrick. Summer withdrawals. Yes. So, basically, you're looking at, you know, your June, um, from, to this day till August. So, that's 159, and that gives you the breakdown by schools. And then, um, we have some additional information that we'll give you as far as number of homeschools and things like that, but I don't want to steal Patrick's thunder, I'll let him give that to you. Any questions? Okay. Thank you.
Well, let's, uh, just jump right in there with Patrick right quick then.
Hold on, Patrick, we'll tag team.
You're bringing a paper?
The technology guy passes out the paper.
Paper?
That's right. These numbers change.
Yes.
Exactly.
Yeah. Yeah, that was SPOS money.
All right. You have in front of you a couple sheets of paper. The first one, the first two sheets are the grid ones, and it is a comparison of, actually, August 11th of last year and August 10th of this year. It's just worked out that that was the date of our, our, our meetings. And if you look at last year's number, at this point in time, our enrollment was 4,408. To, today, on this sheet of paper, on the other sheet of paper, we are at 4,453. So, a difference of 45 students for opening of a school, five or, you know, what, we eight days in right now. So, we're pretty comparable to where we were last year. Um, if you take last year's, uh, numbers on the 16 page, and you roll up the grade levels, and you'll see how those students progressed in those grade levels, whether or not they changed or not. We rolled out 299 graduates this year, and right now, we're at 282 seniors. So, um, at this point in time in the year. So, that's kinda how we're, you know, last year, we had 309 11th graders. So, between the start of last year, we've lost a few 11th graders, whether they transferred or whatever, the case may be. That's what these two sheets do, they compare time in last year to right now. Underneath that, there's some color-coded boxes. Last year, at this point in time, we were dealing with the influx of those Wildwood kids, when, uh, so that, that shows over in the green, and we took in just 28 students last year. 19 came in from homeschool, and eight came in from cyber academy. Um, the cybers came back from cyber. This year, um, we didn't have Wildwood, so I threw in Mountain Ed this year. We had 24 come back from homeschool, six come back from Mountain Ed, and we had 20 come back from cyber. So, you can see that, that, those numbers at play. When you go over to the orange box, our no-shows are dramatically up right now. We were at 29 this time last year, we're at 73 right now. So, I do know, I read a report today for the attendance clerks, a lot of the students have been contacted. They have been, we know where they are, I'd say a majority of them. However, we cannot take them off of roll until they officially give us the paperwork, whether it's a district that hasn't started, uh, they're moving to homeschool, and they haven't filled out that intent to homeschool form, uh, whatever the case may be. But I would say a majority of the students have been contacted, you know, where they are. Some have moved out of state, so those state schools haven't started yet, so, um, they are, they are tracking those down, so don't think that we're just missing 73 kids. Um, then we look into the, the students that have withdrawn. Last year, we lost, at this point in time, 11 to homeschool. This year, we're at 12. So, the numbers are pretty comparable when you look at that. Uh, nine went out to private school, 10 have gone to private school this year. Uh, cyber academy, we had 15. This year, we only have 11. The transferred within the state of Georgia, they went to Cherokee, or Barto, or Pickens, or, uh, sorry, Floyd, or wherever they were going. We had 118 go out last year, we had 119 go out this year. Um, out of the state, we had 20 go out last year, we had 13 go out this year. And then last year, we lost 15 to Mountain Ed, and we lost 22 right now to Mountain Ed. Like I said, those numbers change on a daily basis, depending on how they, um, how they feel when they wake up sometimes in the morning. The last sheet of paper gives you a breakdown of where the kids are going and where they're coming from. So, I kinda broke it down of, these are the students that are coming in. I didn't give you that.
Do they have that?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, as you can see, our biggest competitor, um, is Cherokee. And we, we, we brought in 85 students from Cherokee this year, and we lost 36 back to Cherokee. What?
So, we're winning.
We're winning right now, yes.
We win.
Okay. Um, they're coming in from Cobb. Now, there's a, there's a number at the bottom that says "other". That means they've transferred somewhere around the state, and the numbers are below three, or three or four. I just grouped them all together in another, there wasn't enough to, to really show anything. Um, Dawson, we, uh, we had 21 come back from the cyber academy, 22 from Gilmer. Gilmer's another big one that we trade students with a lot. Um, we, we do trade a couple with Fannin, but mostly, it's Gilmer and Cherokee, the two bordering counties. And then the outgoing ones, once again, you got Cherokee, 36, you got Gilmer, 27. So, and those are our two, our, our two biggest players besides us when we swap kids. And their numbers look very similar to ours when we talk about changing kids around from one, one district to another. So, any questions about how the, those numbers break down?
But this is really interesting, Patrick, thanks for...
I, I wanna point out, though, at the, the grid, on the grid pages, I want you to look at the bottom, bottom left, where it talks about the enrollment center. You know, from open enrollment to the time schools started and to this time last year, we processed 331 students. And open enrollment through the first week and a half of school, we've processed 331 students through our center. So...
Seems to be stopped.
Yeah, they, they, uh, they keep coming. And they, and the problem is, they're leaving just as fast, you know, we're, as, you know, we might enroll three, four, five, and then we'll get a records request for some of the no-show kids and some of the, the students that are transferring to homeschool or something like that. So, I do know, like I said, Shelley's group is, uh, the, the report I ran today had a lot of notes that they had contacted parents regarding the, the intentions of their students. Some of them were tracked down out of state, some of them were tracked down, intent to homeschool, but we just haven't received that paperwork. So, I would assume, starting Monday, we could crack down, getting those in. So, questions?
Were the majority of it, you enrolled the week before school started? Is that what you were saying in the enrollment office? Is it the week before or the week of school starting?
Yes. Yes, yes.
Did you have any extra staff to help the week before school started?
Yes, we took the data clerks out of the schools, and we re-aligned them to tour with Shelley in the attendance office, and toured out with me.
I was just wondering how you did all that, if you didn't have extra staff, so. I'm sure it was still overwhelming, even with extra staff.
We have the east and the west added to Clarkstown, so... He has two, and I have two. Three of them do, uh, attendance at, there's three schools. So, the east does Tate, Harmony, Pickens County Middle. The west does Jasper Elementary, Jasper Middle, and Hill City. So, and basically, his, I think your, your ladies are trying to stay on the same, as far as records and things like that goes, they're trying to, you know...
We greet the students and parents with open arms.
Well, thank you for all the hard work those first few weeks.
I did wanna say especially thank you for, not only has, has, uh, Patrick taken on, I mean, opened, I mean, simple registration, but he also's been doing scheduling and everything else. And, uh, I know for the last three or four weeks, uh, him and, uh, Michelle and his staff has sometimes been working seven days a week and 10, 12 hours a day, and we certainly do appreciate all that time and effort.
Thank you.
Absolutely. I was just gonna say, thanks to, hats off to Patrick. If you have any extra coupons, or spa, or massages, or whatever, we could pass them on to him, get his toes done, or... Yeah, they have been working very, very hard, and we do appreciate all their help. Any other questions? Thank you.
Patrick, is that it as far as technology?
If you want me to finish?
Go ahead, since you're there.
Okay. We must get down to technology. Uh, the things on my, the technology, I was just gonna back up what Shelley had said about the current enrollment and those numbers, and hopefully, between what Shelley gave you and what I gave you, hers compared the last day of school to the opening, and it showed the gains and the loss, mine was from the beginning of last year and the beginning of this year. So, um, and how those numbers played out. You'd think with all the applications that we're processing, our numbers should be skyrocketing, but, you know, we gotta close the door on the other side, I think. The report I gave you also shows the breakdown by grade levels, and, um, I think at some point in time, we can discuss class size and that, that kinda stuff in the future, if you, you wanted to go into conversations like that, and how those numbers play out with the, with the enrollment numbers. Uh, I think it's still really early in the game to do some, some of those conversations. The withdrawal statistics I showed you, I gave you a sheet of paper of basically where the kids are going, um, the surrounding counties. That's that last sheet of paper that I gave you. Just interesting to see how, how many kids were trading with the surrounding counties. The, the last part was the technology updates, the other part of the job. And, um, we had two big projects that are still ongoing, as you can see the big boxes behind me. Uh, some stands were, uh, lost at sea, uh, somewhere between here and China, uh, that are still, were on a boat for the, for the Prometheum stands. My, my intent was to have that completed before school started. However, uh, the stands never arrived on U.S. soil, so they are slated to come in, um, beginning of next week, so they say. And then will be a big push to get those out and delivered to the schools. The ones that were, um, delivered earlier in the summer were put on stands and delivered to classrooms, and those, those are in use now. However, we just, the stands we bought for the kindergarten classrooms are adjustable, so that they could go a much wider range of mobility, um, vertically, and, uh, they just, that special order didn't come in. So, and then the, the, the odd, the other, the extra one is a combination of Stacy's project and my project, is the security overhaul with the cameras. I do know they were, um, they've rewired, or they wired all the additional cameras that were being put in, and right now, they're waiting on the cameras to be delivered, and then they'll continue with the project. So, um, they got all, most, if not all, of that, that done before students at the schools. So, in a lot of cases, they'll see cables, like the one hanging over here in the corner, um, just waiting for a, a camera to get plugged in. So, they're ready, they'll get plugged in, and then we'll be live, and we'll have eyes and ears everywhere. So, we're pretty excited about that. Other than that, what other, what else can I do for you guys?
Thanks, sir.
Anything else? No? If you got any questions, please call me. Stop by, we'll let you fill out some applications, you know, enroll some kids. Come on.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Stacy?
Well, we're back. I won't say we hadn't missed a kid, and I won't say we hadn't, uh, lost a kid. But other than that, it's going pretty well. Transportation, I'm telling you, you should come to the office one evening or one morning and just sit there and listen and watch. It's continuous, two people on the radio, one on the phone, or two on the phone, one on the radio, the whole time. By tomorrow, it'll just smooth right out. It's amazing how much better every day it gets. So, it's, it's really, uh, we, we have people that don't turn in paperwork, so we don't know they've moved, and we don't know why their kids dropped off at the old location. That's the location we have. But when the kid says, "I don't live here anymore", we put him on the bus, take him back to school, so. It slows us down, it messes up some of our timing and stuff the first week or two. Dr. Wilson threw a rock in the car, and he made me reroute buses and cars over to Jasper Middle School about a week before we got school started. But you know what? I give him kudos, it's working. Uh, it's gotten better every day. Uh, we did help the traffic on 53 by far. We had a little stacking problems in the back because of the one lane coming in, but we've, we've kinda doubled that lane now, and it's, by not spending some money and repaving it, it's, uh, not the best as it could, as it could be, but, you know, if we plan on staying there, we need to do something to that, but if we don't, then I think it'll suffice this year. It's better, isn't it? Y'all like it better? Principals and all, it's, uh, it's really been good for the buses. We're, we're a lot more efficient getting in and out of there now. One problem is... it, it's, uh, not the best as it could, as it could be, but, you know, if we plan on staying there, we need to do something to that, but if we don't, then I think it'll suffice this year. It's better, isn't it? Y'all like it better? Principals and all, it's, uh, it's really been good for the buses. We're, we're a lot more efficient getting in and out of there now. Uh, one problem is we've got a little glitch with picking up athletic programs because it's, happens right at the same time everybody's there and we really don't have anywhere else to put a bus in and out. So we've worked that out by the, uh, between the two schools, by the lunchroom. Had a little problem with, uh, the first morning, we had food delivery and garbage pickup and they're never there on that time. I'm like, oh my lord, the first morning you're gonna do this. It just was a glitch and we worked through it too, but that's worked pretty well. And then Dr. Wilson and all, Tate's had, they backed up on 53 for years and years and years. And we've looked at it two or three times, but we went to Tate and talked with the staff and we changed a little, tweaked a little bit. We've moved the buses up further, closer and a little past the cafeteria and we're bringing the kids out that way to the buses. And we're stacking two lanes of cars. Before they only had one lane and it started about the sign on the road, so you weren't stacking 10 or 12 people. Now we're probably stacking 40 to 50 people. Still have one or two in the road, but it's usually turning lanes and stuff. They're not backed down to the bridge in the Tate clinic anyway, so I think we've helped that. We're gonna go back and look again after they run it this full week and see. I know we did, the first day was Friday and I think it was better then and it's still getting a little better, isn't it? Getting a rhythm, people finding out what we're trying to do. And talking to all the people and lining, as I was lining them up the first day, they were all just, yes, please, let's do this, this, and they were excited, so maybe we've made a couple of good changes. It takes time to tweak them all out, but other than that, uh, we're running 63 buses, 70, uh, 61 buses, 73 routes, which is 12 double routes. Uh, I'm short drivers. I've got, got one out with his wife in a bad car accident this week, one of our teachers here, and, uh, Sherry's had to actually fill in and monitor it a couple of times and we pull some other people in. We've got a class coming up the 21st and we have seven people signed up, first time we've had. And they seem excited and they seem to be, I, I really believe we'll get over half of them there. Normally you get one, but, uh, I'm excited about that. Maybe we can get them. If we do, cause field trips for athletic events is fixing to bust wide open and I'm telling you, that's when we're gonna get it. That's when it's gonna mess us up. You need those five or six subs to do that. You know, they'll do a route and somebody will want to take that because they can make a little more money, so we swap them around and give them some choices there. But other than that, it's, it's going pretty good. We got all the new buses are on the road, all the cameras and all that, everything's in those. We, uh, we got some, uh, safety training going on at elementary schools, the mandatory safety training for buses. It's probably basically through, I think we got Tate tomorrow and maybe one next Monday that, and we'll be through with the training that has to be done the first two weeks of school. Uh, Sherry said to say it was smoothest opening she'd ever had, but three days later she's saying, "I may have to retract that." But I'm proud of them, they've done a good job. Uh, that, that's a hardworking crew. Maintenance, you, I don't know if you've been around and looked, but we did a lot of things this summer. If you look at the high school and you come down the hill, that pink wall is gone now. We have fixed all that stucco, we've washed the hut in front of the building and all the sides and painted all the canopies and redid the band room and, I mean, you can just look around and see a lot of things. I appreciate y'all backing us, giving us money to do that and letting us spend it on that kind of things. I hope you all get to tour the band room because this type of flooring I put in there is something I would like to lean us toward one day for corridors and things, stop all the stripping and waxing and, and it helps with the sound and it hel, it helps with everything. It's just very good product and it's coming down in price where it's compatible to do. So I hope we look toward it for the future and especially if we build a building or remodel some buildings here soon, that we, we look at that kind of stuff. So please go by the band room and look at it. Settling up the insurance claim on the hail. We've had four hailstorms and we're getting, we've got money coming from two of them still. Uh, I will have the money for the greenhouse and the, uh, football field equipment and stuff, probably next week, she's cut the check. But we gotta get them a new building and get all new pads for the jump, for the high jump and, uh, pole out and all that, cause it destroyed, blew them in the woods and tore the pads all to pieces, so. Got a lot of that going on, but it's, it's been non-stop. We've worked hard this week. Uh, Dr. Wilson's been a great support. He's learning that. I tell him everything because when they make a phone call and he gets it, I don't even know about it. I don't want it to be a surprise and he have to call me and say, "When can you tell me this?" So he'll probably run me out of his office from telling him so much stuff. I like to make sure he knows it before he gets in trouble, but that's, you know, I hope, I hope y'all are pleased with what you see in the schools. We, we, we tried to, everybody got a lot of painting this year. We didn't do just a little, we did a lot. I think they look better. I think they, they're cleaner looking, they smell better, they, I think they all look better. We still got a long ways to go with Jasper Middle because I didn't put as much in it. Y'all gotta make the decision, tell them what to do with that. Anything, questions, anything on your minds?
We're gonna do a little presentation, a little bit of recapping some things, but just, uh, tell, tell them, do you remember how many miles y'all drove last year?
We drove, God, am I gonna say this wrong? Was it 500, 521,000 miles? We had 543 field trips and ac, and athletic activity trips and that does not count FFA because they've got vehicles and all. We didn't even put that mileage and all in there. We drive 19, we drive right just exactly at 3,000 miles a day. Beth, she's not here, she had a commitment. She, she said we served, uh, 65,000 pounds of chicken last year. I mean, there's some numbers out, people just really need to see it. He's got the report and I, I hope he shares it with you and if not, I can share my information with you. But it's just amazing when you put the big numbers with it.
Yeah, I, I think...
500,000 miles and we had four fender benders on, in the buses and not one of them was our fault. Not going with it. It's amazing.
65,000 pounds of chicken. 200,000 pounds of present vegetables. 40,800 gallons of milk.
Oh, gosh. I mean, you don't realize, the system is huge. We handle a lot of people.
We did with a staff of 40.
Forty-three, forty-four. And they're not off, they're not off at 8 a.m. today?
No.
Some are four, five, six, seven and eight.
In seven different locations.
It's just, when you put numbers like that, it's...
563 lunches and 163,000 breakfasts. And we get, uh, 98 and higher on all of our health inspections every time.
Yeah. She's not even here to get the...
I know.
That's a workaholic. I made her go home. Honestly, I told her, I said, "This is ridiculous. You're here at 6, 7 o'clock every night, you need to go home." She said, "Well, I really need to tonight. My daughter's by herself." I said, "We'll get there." So it's kind of my fault she's not here. I told her I'd take the money for her.
Thanks, sir.
Well, thank you for all your staffs out to work this year.
Mr. Chairman concludes my remarks. Next item will be the approval of the FY18 local board training plan. Your motion?
I'm gonna make a motion to approve the FY18 local board training plan.
I'll second.
Motion by Mrs. White, seconded by Mrs. Lewis. Any discussion?
All in favor?
Five. Any opposed? None. Motion carries. Next will be an out-of-state field trip. Mr. Carter?
Our, um, thank you guys, glad to be here tonight. Our cross-country team is asking for permission to go out of state, also overnight trip to, um, Orlando, uh, Thursday the 5th to Sunday the 8th of October. They talked to the principal, Mr. Wallace and myself, um, to get to this point, but, you know, we need board approval for that. So, uh, this is eight, uh, eight students and it's no cost to us, Booster Club pays. Um, but they would have to miss school part of the day, that's why they need Mr. Wallace's approval. Um, I guess part of the day on Thursday and all day on Friday the 6th. There's, um, a bigger cross-country meet for some of our stronger runners, uh, in conjunction with going to Disney World, which I'm sure they're just going to run and not going to Disney World. Um, but we need your approval for that, so we're asking for approval for, uh, eight cross-country students and a few coaches, uh, to go on those dates with no cost to the district.
I'll make a motion. Will we approve the out-of-state field trip across country team?
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Long, seconded by Mrs. Lewis. Is there any discussion?
I mean, we're all gonna get a little mouse.
I mean, we can make a stipulation and make sure, take care of us, Long. Thank you guys, appreciate all your support.
All in favor?
Chris, if you would pass along, I'm, I'm really proud of our cross-country crew. They really work hard. We've got some great runners and they work really hard, so.
We do.
I hope they enjoy their trip and have a very successful time.
I'll make sure to tell them. It's probably the most, for, um, the way they rank in the state, the most successful program we have. They've done a great job cross-country and track, um, and we get a lot of support from all of you and the whole community, so thank you very much, appreciate it.
All in favor was five. Any opposed? None. Motion carries. Next will be approval of minutes from the July 13th regular and July 24th called meetings. Your motion?
I make a motion, we approve the amendments for both these meetings? I'll second.
Motion by Mrs. Lewis, seconded by Mrs. Pendley. Any discussion? All in favor? Five. Any opposed? None. Motion carries. Next will be approval of surplus from Higgins High School. I hear a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the surplus as presented.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Long, seconded by Mrs. White. Any discussion?
I wanna keep those maps for this.
See how much the world changed in 20 years.
They're 20 years old, I bet there is quite a few changes.
All in favor? Five. Any opposed? None. Motion carries. I'll get a chance to look over personnel. Your motion to approve the Personnel Action Report as presented?
I make a motion to approve the Personnel Action Report as presented.
Motion by Mrs. Lewis.
I'll second.
Mrs. White, any discussion? All in favor? Five. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, more comments?
I would just like to thank everybody. Um, it's been such a great first part of the year, I think, uh, at least from our perspective, I hope, uh, from yours as well. Thanks for all your hard work, getting everything off and running. I, at one point you checked my email, I wasn't even sure it was working because I was not getting, getting anything. I thought, wow, this is awfully quiet. So thank you very much.
Funny you said that. I sent myself an email just to check. I haven't heard anything from any school all week.
I know, it was amazing.
No calamities, no crises.
So thank you very much.
Yes, thank you. I've heard nothing but positive comments from our community of all of our schools and our staff, so thank you for all your hard work.
Any other comments?
We'll make mention that we had our move on when ready students coming from the high school, tech and technical programs this week. Uh, a little bit of adjustments on getting the bus on time, getting the bus back to, uh, the high school on time before they, before the next block, but that's been very positive this week. Uh, parents, uh, said they were having, their kids hadn't seemed so enthused about going to school in a long time, so it's been very good, so, so it's a very good thing.
And I'd like to thank you for having us, to the ambassadors, uh, that we had at the technical college to see about that program. I think it's gonna be something really neat at the high school and, um, I appreciated you including us to come over there and see. I think the kids are gonna get a lot out of that and I hope to see many of our students go through that program to see how important it is, the voting process is, and, um, so thank you for bringing that in.
I just appreciate, uh, Mr. Wallace orchestrating all that and, uh, it is gonna be great for our kids. It really is.
Any more comments? Next item will be to adjourn.
I'll be glad to make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Mr. Long.
I'll be glad to second that.
Seconded by Mrs. Lewis.
My goodness.
Any discussion? Any discussion over that one? All in favor? Five. Good. Any opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned.
Good, it's date.